Good afternoon. It's five o'clock in Orano, but only four o'clock here in Nashville. So I'm happy to join you remotely and thank you Amanda and Pete for providing me a web link so I could join today. Council Marks is going to be my eyes in the room to the extent that there's just patient and things that I can't see from from here. But so thank you. We'll start with a roll call for the special town council meeting for Monday, September 23rd at twenty 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 four. Looks like we have Council Baker, Council Kenny, Council Larway, Council Berthistle, Council Marks, Council Powers in attendance and of course myself, Council Demerit. You can all hear me, right?
Dan, I can't hear you well. Your volume's up. You're there, but you're very.
Very soft.
Yeah, we need the volume up.
Although I don't think you need to say everything you just said again.
Okay.
I think.
We heard that we're here and that you took roll call, but your voice is soft. We're trying to get the volume.
Yeah, Pete's gonna have to turn me up on that end, I think, because I don't think I can talk any louder into my microphone.
That's better. Could be a little louder, Pete, if you're listening.
We're shocked. We're asking for it, to be honest, but.
I bet you are. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll start with the agenda review. The first couple of things on the, well, just for references, a couple of items here that are are still have been referred to committees. We've got a public safety building discussion and we're waiting the start of the fire chief to begin that in November. Uh, we've also got a discussion that we'll take on regarding council approval and limits for spending. That was order twenty four sixty four. We keep these on the the list so that we know that they're there. We don't have any tabled items for uh to committee and we did want to talk about agenda reviewing and clarification, kind of moving forward on these. I'd like to kind of have a discussion first, then move things around as we need to, and I'd like to ask that we do that by unanimous consent and the extent that unless someone objects, and then we'll take a vote. If somebody objects to us moving something around. And as always, if we add something through the agenda because of the ordinance, we have to agree to do it with a unanimous vote. So I start with, are there any items for any clarifying questions or discussion matters we could jump on quickly under agenda review?
Do you want me to clarify here, Dan?
Sure.
So we need the, on the consent calendar, order two hundred, two oh one and two oh two need to be moved. There were regular items done separately because you gotta add the word conditional approval for all three. Um inspections are almost complete, but it's good to go, but we don't want to get full approval, knowing that there's still some items to take care of.
What are those numbers, Clint?
Two hundred, two oh one and two oh two.
All right. Yep. We'll pull all three of those off the consent agenda. We're gonna have public hearings on them and then we'll take them up as um as items under um action items. That's what you want to do, right? And we'll amend it at that point. Okay. Any other clarifying matters or questions before we start moving stuff around or trying to add things? Okay. Any interest in moving something? I know Council Kenny, you've got a six o'clock stop with us tonight?
Yeah, so um if I wanted to ask if we can move from the action items twenty fifteen and and also twenty four, twenty four, one fifteen and twenty four, one sixteen.
Do you want to move up to the front of the agenda?
Somehow get them in the first hour.
We can move them without objection. We can move those to the front of the um the action items and get to them, you know, as quickly as we can. Hopefully we'll be there within the first hour. Does that make any objection with that for people?
Two sixteen?
No, twenty four, one fifteen and twenty four, one sixty.
Oh, the two fifteen and two sixteen.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right.
And where did you say we're moving them, Dan?
Move, I I propose we move them to the front of the action items. So the very first thing after the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Amanda, can you keep me on track with that from afar? Thank you very much. Good. Any other moving around things? Any additions that anyone would like to put on the agenda for today?
I have one, Dan.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to move that we add a discussion item discussing whether there will be a candidate's night interview session or a candidate's questionnaire for something for our candidates currently running for the town council seat. I'd like a council discussion about that.
Would you like to add it as five D after we acknowledge Council Berthistle?
Yes, that sounds lovely.
Okay, let's do that then. And and we had a vote on it since that's a, so any discussion about that before we vote? Okay, we'll have a quick roll call vote. I'm gonna vote for it. Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Larway? Council Berthistle?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
All right, by unanimous vote, we'll add that to our agenda. Thank you, Sarah. Um, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna close the agenda review section, going once, going twice. All right. Now we'll move on to approval of minutes for August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four and September ninth, twenty twenty four. Could I have a motion on that?
They'll move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do it.
I had one thing. Clint, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll clarify.
Thanks.
The agendas were corrected. There was a clarification regards to the presentation from Isabel regarding the permitting at the University of Maine, but there was just some conversation and shared information. So we had Isabel go back and put in the language from her memo directly into the conversation rather than leaving it up to the conversation of that during the meeting.
I, yeah, I want to say I appreciate it because I think it clarifies for the public that it's not that the university is being exempted from all reviews just for very specific kinds of projects. So thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so it would be one change.
All right. Okay, with that change, are we ready for a vote? Okay, this is a vote to approve the minutes for both August twenty sixth and September ninth, twenty twenty four. Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
Favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Berthistle?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
I'm in favor. That's a seven to zero vote on those items. Next, we have public comment. It's a chance for Orano, uh, the town of Orano, county, Orano Town Council to welcome feedback from the public. Do we have anyone this evening who would like to provide public comment? We limit public comment to no more than five minutes. And we ask that people do not address employees of the town of Orano by name.
Dan, since we're sitting somewhere where there's not a podium and a mic, do you want people to stay at their seats to stand up? What do you want them to do?
Yeah, they could do it from their seats. I just can't see them. So you're gonna have to identify. I can only see the folks in the front couple of rows and.
Sit by Clint and.
Hey, oh, Dan, I see Dan there.
You want to sit right here?
Come on up, Dan. You introduce yourself and we'll start your clock. Thanks for joining us.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm Dan Dixon, resident of Orano. I live on Mayo Street. I've been here for a lot of years, since two thousand on and off. Um, so two things, I'll make it real quick. First thing is the speed limit sign that just went in um between Hamelin Street entrance and downtown. Cars coming over the hill, they're seeing the speed limit sign, they're doing like thirty eight or whatever, but they don't, and then all of a sudden they realize oh, I should probably be slowing down, but they don't know what the speed limit is because they didn't see it on the other side. So I would recommend putting a twenty five mile an hour speed limit sign either directly under the the uh display or on the, or either on one of the next door um posts, power power posts. Second thing is um the crosswalk near the school road. Is that Westwood?
Yeah.
Westwood Road. Twice, I've been caught in the middle there with cars crossing either way. And I've just been standing in the middle and no one stops. They don't even see me. And it's quite dangerous. A number of times my son has been crossing the road and one car has stopped on one side and then the ones on the other side just keep going. And sometimes the cars go around even when a car has stopped. So it's it's getting pretty dangerous. The paint's all worn away. No one could see it. No one knows there's a crosswalk there and the light's starting to fade now. Evenings are getting, you know, darker. I think it's it's gonna be an issue. So I don't know what we can do about it. I would love to see one of those lights, flashing lights there. I think it would help the crossing guard as well when they need to stop traffic. Um, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, is there anyone else with public comment? Careful walking home, Dan.
He's saying we've got someone on line, Dan.
Thank you. Can you bring him over, Pete?
Stand.
All right, Jeff Gordon.
Yes. Are you ready?
Public comment.
Okay, it's come to my attention that uh for viewers participating in a council meeting over Zoom that there is no method for raising a point of order. Um, last council meeting, I was watching the last half of it over Zoom and there was a situation that I was seeing that I wanted to raise a point of order. I raised my hand on the uh on the Zoom screen, but there's no way for me to actually break in and present a point of order.
Okay. We'll look into it, Jeff, and get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. There any other public comment today? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment period. Um, and move on to presentations and discussion items. Clint, you want to introduce our James Francis for that this conversation?
It'd be my pleasure. Yeah, I'd like to introduce James Francis. He can come up, Jane, everybody can come up, sit with me. He's doing a presentation, had some conversation, provided some information to your packets. Um, there's been a lot of great dialogue between myself and Panopscot Nation and his role as the, oh, I'm gonna get it wrong again. Director of.
Cultural Historic Preservation.
Cultural Historic Preservation. I apologize. I will eventually get it. Um, but yeah, so he's got a couple of proposals that were in here for your consideration. One correction, it did say in one place, and the way it was worded, it sounded like there was one sign, prices for two. And he'll explain more about those quarters and the plans.
Good evening and thank you for having me. Um, like Clint said, I'm I'm with the Panopscot Nation and before I go any further, I do want to say that um there has been a response generated. I have, I've seen it and it's at the chief's office and he is corresponding with the council before. Uh, I'll probably be bringing it back to you guys. Um, the the letter. Um, so there is a response that has been generated and that is forthcoming. So uh, good news. Um, things move slow. Things move slow on the other island.
Not sure they moved that quickly here.
That's a response, that's a response to the town, the Orano Town Council's letter, apology letter from we sent, it was December that, so just sort of context for anybody who's wondering, but go ahead, James.
So um, the the first proposal I sent to Clint was um we were part of a meeting here in this room some months ago that dealt with the upgrades to the boat landing down in what I call the basin. Um, and um it's a very important uh place culturally uh for the Panopscots and we wanted to be a part of a signage initiative to share that importance um at that place. And so I sent a proposal on to Clinton after meeting with them about an interpretive signage uh project down in the basin. And um, the Panopscot Cultural Historic Preservation would be uh doing the um doing the actual research and the the writing of the signage. And then um they would be contracting out the design of of the um, the graphic design work. Um, so in addition to that, um, I've been working with um Jeff Owen. Is it with an S or no? Um, Jeff Owen at the school and um avid canoe is the boat of us. And he was considering signage down at um, down by his little boathouse.
Brownie's Beach. Brownie's Beach, right?
Brown's Beach.
Brownie's.
Yeah, and which actually, um, believe it or not, kind of links up to the other place uh from a cultural landscape uh component. So it it makes sense to be doing uh both of those at the same time, linking those two uh areas of town together. Um, additionally, and I've been working with the town of Old Town at Estes Bridge, which is um the one over Jamison Falls on the Stillwater on Stillwater Avenue is going to also have a um signage component on the island that the, it's actually two bridges, there's an island there. On that island, there'll be some signage. And um we'll be, we'll also be doing that one, which I think could link to um to these two. So um, so that's the first thing. And did they get copies of that proposal, Clint, or?
They had copies of that proposal as well as the interpretive plan description.
Yeah. So um, that's all about I have to say about the interpretive signage. The interpretive plan uh from McCoy Museum Solutions, um, there uh folks that we've been working with many towns. Currently, we're working with Castine. Uh, we just um signed on with Audubon Society and um worked with Frangely and now we're working, looking at um Lincolnville, Brockport and Camden collectively um to do some work down there. And basically, what we do is we go into um either an organization or a town and kind of do an assessment about uh what type of indigenous um assets or histories does that town possess? Um, then a group of us who are brought in as consultants kind of set for some recommendations for the town to how to quote unquote, do better. Um, and then um, and then there's some contacts at the bottom where um folks could get a hold of. It might be me, it might be Darren Ranko, it might be Jennifer Neptune, um whoever we decide for each uh particular report. And to uh, if there's any questions or say the town has another idea that's not on the recommendation. So they have a a touch point uh to um, you know, begin this really important work. And um, we find that these uh, this list of recommendations has been really helpful for towns and organizations when uh applying for grants and to do certain projects and and the like. Um, one example um that I'm planning for next year involves both the town of Orano, the town of Old Town and uh the Panopscot Nation is um there's um a series of what are called WARE walks and they're, WARE is an acronym for Walk for Historical and Ecological Recovery. And they're sponsored by an organization called Atlantic Black Box, which um is out of Portland. And they they um initially were looking to highlight um slave narratives in New England. And they they've shifted some, um, they're still doing that, but they've incorporated also indigenous narratives. And so they do seven of these walks. This is their first year. We had one in Hollowell um at the uh Vaughn Homestead Saturday night. There's one on October sixth and Brunswick where we're gonna be carrying a birch bark canoe across the portage, the ancient portage from the Andrus Goggin River to McCoy Bay in the ocean, about a four mile walk right down Main Street, main with an E. Um, and um, this is just to unearth these narratives. The one I'm proposing for June twenty first of nine of twenty twenty five um would begin at the obelisk that's in Orano in town. Because next year on June twenty first is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of when Chief Joseph Orno went to Watertown, Massachusetts and vied his ally allegiance with the, what he called my brothers, the Americans, um siding with them in the American Revolution. And then we would walk from here um through campus, through the bike trail to Old Town. And then when we got to Indian Island, uh, there's plans to uh rename uh the bridge at Indian Island. Um, probably the Charles Norman Shea Veteran Memorial Bridge. And there's some new signage um that we want to put. We were in, just like you guys, we needed some new signage. Um, we were, we're in need of some signage at the bridge. It's just old and faded. And so we're also gonna take the opportunity to do that um at that same same time and unveil that. So I'm looking to uh work with, of course, the town of Orano. Um, looking to work with Old Town, University of Maine ROTC, uh plus the VFW and um the allegiance in the area, uh because this is all about uh veterans. And June twenty first is also a recognized holiday in the state of Maine, Wabanaki Veterans Day. And it was picked that day because of um Chief Joseph Orno and the date that he went to Watertown to give that speech. So um, that's just an example of, you know, one of those types of things that may be on the recommendation list. Something that I'm gonna head up and and do anyways, and I would love um the town of Orano to be on board with that. It's um, you know, I've been telling Clint that the town of Orano should be the the first town in this whole state to have a a great relationship with the Panopscot Nation because of of the name. He's a very important chief in our history and um, you know, personally, as a history student who went to University of Maine, um, his legacy in this town being named after him, it it does me proud. So um, I think that's working together, uh the town and um, you know, the Panopscot Nation can really do some great things to elevate his uh his legacy.
Okay, uh, any, any, thank you very much, James. Um, and thank you for the the conversations we've had. We've met with Sarah and I met with James uh in July and had a had an excellent conversation uh to follow up on where we've been and make sure our new town manager had an introduction and a fast start with um, with James and others in the Panopscot Nation. So any questions about these proposals?
Council Brooks?
I think I want to say uh first, thanks so much for the presentation and for um contextualizing kind of parts that are within the town of Orano within kind of a broader framework of how this is happening in Wabanaki Territory. It's really exciting to hear. Um, my question is, I see these two proposals before us. Um, I feel excited and supportive of both of them, and my question is actually for my fellow town counselors. I know that last year we had allocated funding for exactly this kind of thing. Um, and um, my question is, did that roll over to this fiscal year such that it's still allocated? Yes? Great. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a follow up financial question. Is it okay if I ask that, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much, James. These are really exciting and I'm very supportive. I don't know, people might have questions for you. You might have.
The hot seat.
I know. No, they could carry you. Um, and maybe this is more for for Clint, but maybe this is for James. Um, I see we have a vote on the first proposal for the signage in the basin and at Brownie's Beach. It's the two signs. Um, on the Wabanaki Interpretive Planning um Services, I don't see a price quote yet. We're in order before us. Will that be coming, Clint, in the, or James?
Yeah, that's my expectation.
Coming in the next month or something.
We can bring that back. Brought one at a time, kind of right now, just to kind of keep it moving and.
I just think it's really exciting and I want to be sure that, you know, we're getting it back to us as soon as we can to keep talking about because I personally hope we'll be able to move forward with them both. Very excited about the projects you described, all of them. Thank you. Bye, Jacob.
So uh, this is money that was already approved last year as part of the budget. Okay, and then so uh, for the second phase, the uh planning, do we have an estimate of that cost or more importantly, is that also included in that chunk of money that?
We have fifty thousand that was aside. I don't know what the cost is. Maybe they can speak to that or maybe they can't, but we we set aside fifty.
Okay, that's helpful background information. So this is money that we've already set aside to do things of this nature.
Do you have a ballpark, James, on what the interpretive um work could cost?
I I researched that. The the proposal's ten thousand and in talking with some local vendors with the signs and then the the uh that we'd have to place as well as that, probably another ten. It would depend on how intricate. I think the key goal would be to speak to Old Town. Um, if all three could have.
I think he's asking about the second.
Oh, the interpretive part. Were you asking about the interpretive part?
Yeah, well, it's a two ball though. I mean, so it'd be tw- about twenty thousand dollars to do the the sign design work that's on the order before us. And it's the installation at Brownie's and in the basin. So twenty thousand dollars to get that work done. And then the, I wanted to know what the interpretive uh planning work would be, ballpark.
Slap for just a minute because Jacob and Leo both had a question about the twenty thousand dollar figure. Can you slap a second?
Sure. Is it ten or one? I thought it was ten.
Twenty.
I think the ten is the proposal that James is, James is bringing us about the design of the signs, but there is a manufacturing of the signs cost, I believe, which is what Clint is talking about. Clint, can you speak to that?
Yeah, and I believe I put it in the packet that was in the summary to that effect. But again, their cost, ten thousand dollars. That does not include the structure itself.
Okay, so the proposal in the package, the interpretive signage proposal will have ten thousand dollars. That's only half the cost.
Correct. And that, the second half's an estimate because his design will lead to what the cost is for the signs and everything else we gotta buy. So you, you know, you you can't bid your road before you've designed it. We're not bidding the signage work until he's designed what we're gonna put on it. So we're kind of.
Ten thousand dollars to design the two signs. Is that what I'm understanding? Sorry if I didn't, that wasn't clear. I mean, the thing, but.
And then you gotta buy the sign.
It's gonna be ten, estimated ten thousand dollars to buy the two signs?
That was just a conversation with the company that can do it, that yes, to do the the whatever would go on it as well as a base to hold it, be about another ten thousand.
Okay, so twenty. And then Dan has a question about the interpretive, um, what is the term for the overview of everything that the town maybe?
Yeah, it's a.
Assessment?
Interpretive plan.
Thank you.
So the second part, the interpretive plan, um, we, they've been running between fifteen and twenty thousand.
Thank you.
But we budgeted fifty.
We have budgeted fifty. We're still within.
We budgeted, we took fifty thousand of.
That we approved of last year.
It was carryover funds. We had our little day of everyone pick what you want to throw money at, and so we did that back in. That was a year ago.
Okay.
Year and a half ago.
The, yeah, no, I've got something. So the um, it's important to me that whatever comes out of our planning work, and I say this to, well, I guess everyone, you know, we'll need to implement the the stuff, the interpretive planning work will lead to suggestions that we'll need, that we'll want to implement, which will require resources as well. So that's something to think about. But I think it's important that, you know, it's important not to just have a plan, but uh um, be in a position to implement the elements um so that it adds to the place making and and it gives people a sense of what where they really are when they come to Orano, so.
I'm I'm curious, has has Old Town allocated funds for these sorts of things as well? Are you, are there no signs right now proposed in Old Town in any locations, other than you mentioned the bridge? Yeah, um, so a a couple of things that um I've been talking to Orano, uh, Old Town about is uh one, the that project and um at the bridge, Estes Bridge.
Yeah.
Um, and also um just the beginning of a conversation about um using the boat launch in in Old Town for a possible international canoe museum, um, possibly. So um, just a pet project that I'd like to see built and just in, just one conversation with them about that. Um, but that would be, that wouldn't be really a tribal initiative. That would be really a town initiative. Um, you know, with all, with the history of Old Town canoe and um, you know, the tribe and our history with the birch bark canoe. It's, it's, it's really the the number one town in the United States to have a canoe museum and the United States doesn't have a canoe museum. Um, there, there's one in Ontario in Petersborough, um, Canada, but not here. And United States didn't have a canoe museum. Um there there's one in Ontario in Petersborough, um Canada, but not here. So, those are the only two conversations that I've had uh with Old Town. Um, I did work with the town of Old Town and the Joseph A. Leonard School on some uh murals that went downtown a few years ago. And um really, um what it was, was a a real education process about tribe history in Old Town. And then the students at the middle school worked with an artist to put the components from our history. On onto a mural. It was kind of a, like a winner winner um type of project where the students. Really have a um. Kind of a sense of belonging and ownership of of a mural in town, cause they're the ones who designed it.
I could say I'm I'm looking forward to this as a first step in continuing to build uh hopefully a really positive. Relationship around understanding our shared history and and maybe that with the rest of town. So I'm I'm I'll be in favor of this.
Thanks.
Good. Thanks, James. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And we'll have a chance to vote on that when we get to the action items um after we uh a little bit later on in the meeting. So next up uh for discussion items was um the discussion about item B. Five B is a code of ordinance, chapter thirty six, utilities, article two, sewers, section thirty six five, sewer service charges, sewer rate discussion. Clint?
Yep, oh good, Chris.
Yeah. Hey, Chris.
Yeah, how you doing, Danny?
Good. Would've been fun having you here in New Orleans this weekend, but I mean uh Nashville this weekend, but. Take it away.
I can kick us, if you want me to kick off a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, uh great memo's been attached. Um I think a lot of it's there. We're not gonna review all of that. If anybody wants to get more information, there's a lot of great details there. This came up as a council item during the fee schedule setting. About the sewer rate was going up because our minimum rate needed to go up. Um there's conversation whether that should or shouldn't, so this is the information we're providing. So you can kinda take a look at it.
Yeah, so when you first asked there a few months back about providing, you know, relief for. Um at the time, it was, you know, the aging population that are paying the minimum. And so I approached Shelley, you know, about what that would look like to try to do something. And we started off with um, you know, trying to have some type of an application where people could apply for assistance. And it just kinda kept snowballing, you know, from, you know, the aging population. Well, they're not all on a fixed income. Some people that are in retirement are doing pretty well. So then it turned into low income and. Um and then is, could it, is it just the elderly? How about, you know, veterans and disabled? Um so, you know, we get into a lot of changes in the policy um as well as the ordinance. So it's really gonna be a lot of work. Um. And it's not something we can automate in Trio uh with the rest of the sewer billing. It's gonna have to be hand keyed because it's just not gonna recognize that type of program. However, we did um think that a better option would be for people to apply for general assistance. Um. You don't, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be just heating oil or food. It can be anything that's a hardship. And that whole system is already in place. It can be done without going into the, into the sewer billing process. And, you know, with that's a program that's already in place. It's it's well known, it's well managed um downstairs and. We feel that's a better option. So you get a couple of departments to, if you need to speak either, they're both here, but um.
So and it doesn't leave you shortchanged, does it, Chris? In terms of if if we, if someone qualifies for a general assistance aid with a sewer bill. The money would transfer to the general assistance account into into your accounts?
I don't think this is a big enough population.
Yeah.
To really have an impact on revenues.
Yeah.
Um with some, yes.
Dan, I think Shelley was also nodding maybe in the background that that money. Is that right, Shelley? I'm supposed to be your eyes and I'm thinking Shelley was nodding in the back, so go ahead.
So if a resident was to apply for general assistance and qualify. What would happen is, under that program, utilities are compensated. So in that regard, it would be handled confidentially. We would make the transfer out of the treasury. To the sewer account and take care of that person's um sewer bill or whatever amount that they were allowed. And um if it met the criteria, which in all likelihood it would, we would be reimbursed by the state. At the seventy to seventy-five percent, depending on the breakout. Um and running all of the numbers and evaluating several years of our liens process. We did not find that the liens um that were there were a result of hardship. Or not having the means to pay. It was a matter of having other circumstances that led to those residents being noticed. With a reminder, then a thirty day, then a lien. Um. And when I talked with the Trio Company and I talked to other municipalities throughout the state. That had looked at this type of program, everybody ended up going back to the general assistance program. So um there are a few communities in Maine that do have this type of a discount program. But they said it is very hard um to manage. It takes a lot of man hours for what they actually have for usage. So.
So. So thank you for, because I was one of the people that asked for this and thank you for all of the work. I had no idea it was this much. But what I was envisioning is not making it nearly this complicated by going through hardship application or anything else. I, I'm being naive, but why can't we just keep the minimum rate at seventy-five dollars or wherever it previously was?
Well, that's, that's the part that would require an ordinance change.
And I thought that's okay. Hugh, yes, just to summarize for everybody, the minimum rate's based upon the minimum cost to run a sewer system for the whole pound of Orno. So this is the bare minimum anybody needs to pay, whether you're connecting or not. You do have access. You don't have to have a septic system on your property. Like a large landowner in a rural area would. You have access to that system, so it's your minimum fee. So when you, when the costs change for what it costs to maintain the system, the minimum rate goes up. Because of whether it's inflation or what we've invested in or how they're maintaining it. So that's why the minimum goes up.
Yeah, it's spelled out in the ordinance that when the rate changes per hundred cubic feet.
Yeah.
The minimum is based on twelve one hundred cubic feet. And that doesn't change year to year. It's always twelve.
Yeah.
So you just multiply twelve by what the rate is. So if the rate goes up, the minimum goes up as well.
But couldn't we just easily change the minimum cubic feet then and maintain their rate at seventy-five?
I think some of that gets outside of Orno to the state level, doesn't it?
You would have to read.
Instead of twelve, you, what you're saying.
Yeah, instead of twelve, make it eleven or however the math works out to keep it at seven. I guess it just, I appreciate all this work. I, it, this just seems overly complicated to.
If it was just to across the board, change the minimum. Um, that would impact revenues, because there are a lot of people that just pay the minimum.
Well, and that's what I originally.
Yeah.
Asked, I mean, for moving forward, just figuring out what that would be, you know, who's paying the minimum.
So. When you calculate your minimum sewer, that is the total usage of water passing through that system. That hits disposal. Part of that also is the connection, the service fees, the maintenance of the plant. So the price that we give represents the entire operations budget of WPCF. If what I understand you are saying, you're saying, could we not have two different thresholds perhaps? Where we might, instead of having twelve cubic, you pay a minimum when you hit nine versus, and then it goes up. I mean, the way that we calculate it right now is we give folks twelve units of consumption per minimum bill.
Yeah.
If they go over that unit, let's say they go to thirteen.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna get hit by an additional six dollars and seventy-five cents roughly.
Yeah.
And that gets added to their minimum bill. But in the state of Maine, as long as you are connected to the sewer supply. And you are tethered into that line, you have to pay to maintain that line. And that is where we come up with the minimum breakdown.
Yeah, and and I understand that. And I guess at the end of the day, five dollars or, it it was minimal this year. I just, I I I'm concerned that we keep raising the minimum rate, that it becomes actually. Prohibitive for some of our residents. And and I guess I was just being naive and thinking that it was a much simpler fix than. Yes. So.
Dan, I was curious just, I think, I'm not sure if it came in this, one of these, I was just looking back through to the documents provided by staff. Or if it came in an email from a member of the public, but I feel like there was some dollar amount that was given somewhere about. For the average person this year, their bill was gonna go up like two dollars a month or something with this rate change. I don't know if I have the figure correct.
We did get an email.
Frederick is nodding at me. Someone's nodding. I don't know if that's.
The minimum was gonna go up six dollars.
Yeah, six dollars a quart, which is about two dollars a month. So that is the amount we're looking at. Just I think it's important as we're talking about what's sustainable for members of the public, we're talking about then. Twenty-four dollars a year total. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say I appreciate the effort of all the hoops you've tried to jump through. And it seems like a logical place where you've kind of arrived that is just false on the general assistance. So um thanks for, thanks for chasing it down essentially, I think. Um and trying, we, I think, I feel like that's a real honest effort of trying to see what we could do and uh I think a good outcome, so.
We'll do a follow up that we can share and I'll give a future update of how many are out at the minimum within the hole. Cause again, we watched that meeting and I heard the conversation and this is more of what we thought was being intended and, and again, but we can't get you that hammer. Yeah.
Right, thank you.
So what's required Clint to move forward with the, if if the council wants the, this to be covered in general assistance? Is there any, what action is required of us?
None. Anybody can do it today. You've been, you're eligible today.
Applaud the effort that went into double checking this for us and uh no need to reinvent the wheel today.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, Chris. And good idea, Jacob. I like it. Um, all right, next item up was, hey, I think we would acknowledge Councillor Sonya Berthasol. So I'm sorry I can't be there, but I'm happy you're in my seat um as we acknowledge your work and your service to the town of Orno. You, I know you, your service to Orno is a lot more than just being on the town council. And I'm I'm sorry as a, as a resident and a councillor to to know that you're leaving town, but I know um great things are ahead for you. And I wanted to thank you for how much you've worked with us to make this transition uh work for, work for the council. And how dedicated you've been to continue to participate in our meetings. So thank you, Sonya. I don't, I don't know if everyone wants to make a speech or not. But I know we have a certificate and it's, it's an honor to have served with you and and I wish you well. And we all wish you well and whatever you, wherever you go and whatever you do next.
My thank you. I will.
I have the certificate. Do you want me to give it to Sonya?
I would love it if you would. Yeah. Thank you, Amanda.
Um and uh thank you, my fellow councillors and staff and members of the town. It's been an honor and a privilege to be a town councillor here for a couple of years. Um I am moving out of town, so I'm uh. This will be my last meeting, hence the certificates. Appreciate it. Uh fellow town councillors, please don't give me speeches in the public forum. You can tell me nice things later and let's move on with business.
Thank you, Sonya.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Uh next up, uh Sarah, we added an item. We're gonna talk about uh, we have a special election. As this is sequenced well, we have a special election to replace Council of Berthasol. We have two qualified candidates. Um Andrea Hardison and James Garrity. And thank you to them for uh stepping forward and and becoming candidates to fill a seat for the remainder of uh Sonya's term, which is. Now through November of twenty twenty-five. So uh Sarah, you wanted to talk about. Uh Candidates Night or what the, you're here from the town in terms of what the, what was gonna happen?
Um yes, I did. I I remembered that at a previous council meeting when we had talked about the papers being open and when that time period closed. There was a question about whether there would be a Candidates Night and at the end of a council meeting, we said, well, we'll talk about that in the future. And I realized we hadn't talked about it and I wanted to be sure as a council we followed through on that. Um, I know for other special elections in the past, this is technically a special election. Because we're filling Sonya's seat for just a year as opposed to a full term, even though it's happening right at a November election time. Um in the past, we have sometimes not been able to hold Candidates Nights. I know the last one when Matt was running was uh very short notice. And we also were in the middle of budget season with a vote coming up in June. And um it had been communicated, we, that staff didn't have the bandwidth to host and coordinate a Candidates Night. Um but instead, we did a Candidates questionnaire where each candidate had to answer quite an extensive list of questions. That they didn't choose, that were the kinds of questions that would be asked of them in a Candidates Night. And then if they turn those back into the town, the town put them on the website, public facing. So I think that's another option as opposed to just a Candidates Night, if we can't do a Candidates Night. But I wanted us to talk about it as a council and just be clear what's happening. So I'm concerned that the public get more information than just the names and not everybody's, you know, on Facebook if a candidate's posting there or somewhere else. So I was hoping we'd get a little more public facing information. If we can do a Candidates Night, I'd personally love to have one live. But if staff are maxed out, then I think a questionnaire could be unacceptable for a special election and now I'm gonna open it to anyone else.
I think, I I think we should do a questionnaire. I have to assume with forty-five days before the vote, we staff does not have the bandwidth to pull. To create and pull that off, so I, but I I do agree that it'd be nice to have something public facing. I guess, I'm sure we don't have a um, a thing going on um or or papers.
Observer?
Observer, thank you. Uh we don't have one of those going up between now and then, so.
Do not. But they do have bios, but there's no questions, it's just a bio.
I, I think um a questionnaire would be great. We, we as a council, then I feel like we should develop that questionnaire. How do you guys, but then we have to approve it.
I think we have.
I think it could be the same one that that was used when we're running for office, which I think had a lot of the questions from Candidates Night on it.
I'm wondering if someone on staff can speak to the questionnaire, if that's possible and remembers it. Shelley's got a hand up, maybe?
So Pete and I have been working to try to get information out on the website.
Right.
The bios have gone up regarding the candidates. Pete and I also met and resurrected questions that have been used in the past. And at this point, I think we were just getting the bios out. I know that he was looking at if we are gonna send out questions, when are those gonna be due back and when do we want them to hit? Absentee ballots are supposed to drop to the public around October seventh. So if we were going to have a questionnaire with answers to post. And that was the council's direction, we'd want that to be timed with when ballots become available. So that was kind of the behind the scenes of what's been happening. Um, so yeah.
Shelley, is it reasonable to put that questionnaire out? I mean, it's two weeks till October seventh approximately. Is it reasonable to get that questionnaire out to the candidates in the next, I don't know, three or four days or what's reasonable?
Yeah, I would work with Mitch's office because him and Pete have a better handle on Pete's schedule as well as what is in the hopper. And if that is the council's intent for us to do that, then we would carry it out.
I would think as long as candidates get at least a full week to answer, yeah.
And and I think if it, if it ends up schedule wise coming after the seventh, I wouldn't sacrifice the great for the good. So I think it it would still be good. Not everyone vote, no one's voting, well, some people will first day, but um. I think if it takes a few extra days, I think that's not the end of the world either. So to the extent that it can be done in the next few days, given a week, get back and then published. If we, if we come close to the seventh, awesome. My take on that.
I'd like to see this happen.
Wait, do you have anything? Yeah, on that.
I would just add that if for Candidates Nights for the larger elections, I think there's a larger conversation the council needs to have. I'd like some clarity, who's hosting and why. Um staff hosting a Candidates Night, the live presentation. I would just wanna have the council high into that approach before the staff's something like that. That's an election. That's just something he's trying to stay not involved in, particularly me.
We've had Candidates Night.
Always done it.
We've had a Candidate's Night for every election since I can remember.
It could be a council's Candidates Night though, is what I would like to talk to you about. It's not a.
And there's been a moderator who's not affiliated with the staff and is a sort of a.
Didn't have any contact. I'll make sure that was there. I don't wanna see anyone else being asked questions.
No, we've had a, we've had an outside moderator and community members can submit questions and they can show up and raise their hands and ask questions. And I think it's really important to the community for feedback.
I'm I'm comfortable with us asking staff to go ahead with a questionnaire because it was part of their work plan. If we're gonna ask staff to host a Candidates Night when it wasn't part of the work plan, I'm gonna ask us to to have a vote of, you know, an order. Directing the town manager to do it. It doesn't sound like we're ready to do that, but I do think we're asking. But I do think we're asking staff to do something that's, you know, if we're just asking staff to go ahead with something that's on the work plan, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm comfortable with that moving forward as part of this discussion. If it's a Candidates Night that they weren't planning to do, I'm gonna ask us to put in a, you know, an order on our agenda and go for it. Um, and that's.
A lot of nodding of heads in the room that a questionnaire is good. So I don't think you have any push a Candidates Night here. Please speak up, counselors, if I'm misrepresenting. Okay.
Alright, yeah. Alright, good. Anything else on this one? So staff has what they need and council feels like we've discussed this as we need to. Alright, we're gonna have some public hearings now. Right, Clint? Is Pat gonna walk us through these or somebody?
Coming right up.
Alright, we're gonna open, uh, Public Hearing A to Consider Revictual License for Harvest Moon LLC, eighteen Mill Street. Pat, can you introduce yourself and walk us through it?
Hello, everyone. Patrick Guesty, Code Enforcement Officer, and our recommendations are based on police, fire, and town clerk.
Yep. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? I'll need help watching the public and keep an eye on the public for me, Sarah.
Okay.
All set. We will close this public hearing and open Public Hearing six B to Consider Revictual License for Orno Trampoline Park, six Stillwater Avenue. Pat?
So we're asking for a conditional approval, um, on a successful inspection, which this week, uh, we will get out there and get that done.
I'm not sure, uh, I might have missed it. Did you say the, uh, on Hearing A? What you, what your, uh, recommendation was?
Yes, I was waiting for Dan usually, uh, does that, uh, but, uh, with with, uh, number A, the con- the consideration of virtual license for Harvest Moon LLC, eighteen Mill Street. We're asking for a conditional approval as well on a successful, uh, inspection.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
If there's someone online, correct, on any of these? Okay, thank you.
Alright, if there's no question, other questions from council, ask, is any comment from the public? Hearing none, we'll close Order, uh, Public Hearing on the Orno Trampoline Park and move, open the public hearing and order uh, to consider Class One Restaurant Malt Wine Spirits and Liquor License. Special Amusement Permit for Music Dancing Entertainment, the Victual's License for Orno House of Pizza located at one fifty-four Park Street. Pat?
And the same with this. We're gonna ask for conditional license, uh, on a successful inspection and we'll get that scheduled this week.
Any questions from council? We've had some, um, I have a question. We've had some, some noise concerns from residents around the Orno House of Pizza. Do you have anything for us on kind of how the progress has been with that, with, with those concerns?
So I know Ed Leskey has, uh, been involved with some complaints with, uh, noise. Um, and the findings, uh, were that they were within our noise ordinance. Um, so that was about a year ago, um, and I have not heard any complaints, uh, since then.
I will say that we've reached out to, I know we've reached out to, by we, I mean, at least me have reached out to the people that have expressed those concerns and asked them to to engage with us further and there hasn't been a lot, hasn't been any follow-up from that. So I, I don't feel like it's something to have standing in terms of how I view this, this hearing and this, um, this application. So, but thank you for the, for answering my question. Any questions from the public? Okay, well, that will close Public Hearing C and move on to Public Hearing D to Consider An Automobile Graveyard and Junkyard Permit For La Pointe Yard Incorporated at two oh one Kelly Road.
And paperwork is in, inspections are completed, um, and we're recommending approval. And we have, have a deal that every year that we do an inspection that they improve on removing their junkyard material back off the property line. And once again, um, they've done that, so it's looking good out there. Um, so we recommend approval.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from residents or, I guess anybody, right? You don't have to be a resident to be heard. The public. Alright, Hearing None, we will close Public Hearing D and open Public Hearing E. Consider The Main Municipal Association Mo- Model General Assistance Ordinance Appendix. Appendixes A through H for the period of October one, twenty twenty-four to September thirty, twenty twenty-five, to be in compliance with Title twenty-two MRS Section four three oh five. Subsection four, paragraph four, I suppose. Clint, is someone, Shelley? Hey, Shelley.
Hello.
Hi, company.
Yes. So before you is the annual, um, reconsideration of the MMA General Assistance Ordinance. Um, there are changes that are coming down the pipe with General Assistance and a lot of these are done or reworked to accommodate the legislative plan that we were released. Um, as far as our general operation downstairs with our GA program, the only big changes that you will see is that we now have to be available to meet with a client at any time that the office is open. So in the past, it had been that we could segregate certain days of the week or times that we would take General Assistance applications and hold appointments, but now um, we're having to be more open and more fluid with our work schedule, which means that, um, the cross-training that we have done across departments to offer additional people, um, is gonna make it easy for us to manage. One person trying to be available at all times can be a struggle. So, um, that is one of the big changes. Another one of the big changes also is the um, amount of support and whether or not something is an SSI. And if a, um, client comes in and they are in an active SSI case, whether they've hit, um, and been approved or denied, or they're in the appeals process. Once we bring them in, they kind of become a bit the responsibility of the municipality so as long as they continue to meet the criteria. And some municipalities around the state are like, well, that could very easily, you know, bankrupt our budget, but the fact is that if it is an active SSI case and they end up winning the case and or the appeal, the municipality is reimbursed at ninety percent as soon as that money is released from the federal government. So yes, on the front end with, um, SSI, it does appear that it could be, um, you know, dwindling down the monies that we have set aside, but that is reimbursed. If it is not an SSI case, then we're getting reimbursed at seventy percent. Um, if you were to pick one sheet of paper out of everything that you were provided, I would make reference to the General Assistance Maximum Reference Sheet that was included in the packet and is available online. But this is a very quick summary of what all of the maximums look like for all the different programs that we assist with. This is a public form and anyone who comes into Orno's GA system does get a copy of this form. So they are fully aware of what types of, um, assistance programs we have available. And we do report out to the state for reimbursement. So the monies that are given by, um, the council during their budget process does come back to us. As long as we have a successful audit and we turn in our reimbursement requests. So, yes.
Quick question, is that a state change that made it so that you have to meet anytime?
Yes. Yeah, it was taken up. It was heavily debated across the state, very strong opinions on both sides. Um, we have to basically be available to take an appointment and within a twenty-four hour period, reasonable amount of time, get back to that client and let them know when we can meet with them. Now, it used to be that you would have an emergency and if an emergency GA come in, you stopped everything and you did it. That is still the case. What I am saying, Leo, is now it's more of a routine nature. So if somebody came in on a Tuesday and I had my GA day be on Monday, I might let that sit there until the following week under the old program. But now, if that GA application comes in, it's the expectation of the program that I'm gonna return a call to that client within a twenty-four hour period and I'm gonna say to them, we can see you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I think I was, I was thinking that it was like, if someone shows up, you drop what you're doing and you go leave with them. It's not that. Not that, not that.
But the expectation has changed around when we would respond to that client and get back to them and give them a reasonable timeframe.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Shelley, for folks who don't know the acronym, can you just explain what SSI stands for? It is.
It's the Social Security and Disability, um, Federal Program in which and I'm gonna draw pens, in which, uh, people would put in an application to the federal government. And if they met the criteria with a medical, um, certification, then they may or may not qualify for having federal monies.
It's just helpful to have it on the record in the recording. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything else from counselors? Any questions from the public? This is a public hearing? Yep, thank you, Leo. Alright, um.
Bye, Leo.
But we'll have to step around.
We're almost there.
Tried. Um, alright, I'm gonna close here in the public hearing E. And I'm going to turn us to acknowledgements by council members. Uh, just, maybe start showing hands. If you wanna be introduced, Ba- uh, um, Council Baker?
Uh, nothing at this time, thank you.
Council Arway?
I have no additional acknowledgements other than thank you for her service.
Okay. Sonia, Council Bertholz?
Um, I'd like to acknowledge James Francis for coming to meet with us today. Um, it's really exciting to me to see um, the continuation of that process and relationship around signage in town and I look forward to seeing it someday when I come back to visit.
That'll be great. Council Marks?
I will second the acknowledgements already made and I want to acknowledge Shelley Crosby, who won a big Lighthouse Award, which is a very big award for a town clerk and someone else could give more details, but I'm just so grateful for Shelley here and the amazing work she does. Thank you.
Council Powers?
Yeah, I'm, as a soccer fan and, uh, in the town, I just wanna acknowledge the junior high, both the girls and boys soccer team, they're doing fantastically and also the high school soccer teams. And if you get a chance, the, the boy, the men's soccer team is playing at home tomorrow. And, uh, yeah, they're doing really well and they're fun to watch.
Excellent. I will, um, pass on acknowledgements, um, and we'll open up the consent agenda. Now, this is an opportunity, anyone has an opportunity to remove an, either council or, or a member of the public can remove something off our consent agenda before we move in block to approve the consent agenda. Now, by my notes and Amanda, I'm looking at, I'm zooming in on you here on my screen. We've moved Order twenty-four two hundred, twenty-four two zero one and twenty-four two zero two off the consent agenda. Is that right? Yep.
Yep.
Anybody wanna move anything else off the consent agenda before we consent? Okay, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
A move?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Now we're gonna do, I'm sorry, I'm not there. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholz?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerit's in favor. It passes, uh, the consent agenda passes six to zero. Now, we moved, um, we'll close, move into item nine, which is action items. We moved Order two one, two four, two one five to the front. So I, my expectation is we're gonna do Order twenty-four, two one five. Then we're gonna do Order twenty-four, two one six, as we agreed to at the front. Then we'll jump into the, um, consent agenda items that we've pulled off. Amanda, is that okay with you? And then we're gonna move through the rest of the order as it's in the orderly way, as the way it's ordered on the, on the agenda. Um, alright, so Order number twenty-four, two one five. Can I get a motion to put that on the table in front of us?
Seconded.
Second. Okay, this is an order authorizing the town manager and property officer using an alternative disposition method to draft a deed with restrictions for transfer of the old fire station subject to final council review and approval. And Pete, I don't know if we're gonna have anybody join us, um, but I wanted to call it out that we might have somebody joining who may wanna speak with us on this topic, but Clint, do you wanna walk us through it? You want me or kinda walk through what the discussion was?
Yeah, from two components, one from process and one from what we did, but for the process, this is what we've been working on as a council, that this is a new item. This is where you can have a decision moment of where you want it to handle it. If you want to do discussion here, council's whole, bring it back later. So this is how they're coming forward now. Uh, might be a little bit of a transition, but hopefully it works and please share feedback as we go along from the process side. Um, as far as the item itself, um, I had an opportunity to meet with some residents and the Boy Scouts on site. Um, a neighbor showed up as well, spoke to us and there was some counselors proportions of it. Uh, Chair Demerit was with me as well. Um, but in that conversation, it just came out, we were talking more about, um, the gear library and the voice in the building itself, what could happen with the old fire station. And in that conversation, it just kinda came up that um, they would be interested to be in a situation where they would be completely in ownership and it would open up their fundraising opportunities. Uh, so I thought this was at a point where it needed to come to the council for some direction. Um, disposition of property is something that falls to the town manager. Um, there is bid processes and so forth, but in this situation, it's being set up more as they've had free access um, for the maintenance of that building. So if you were to change that relationship, I think this is where you're, you've got a current tenant, for lack of a better term, to see if you wanted to work with them or what other processes you wanna consider. I know there's been some in- information shared from others and staff is willing to go forward with anything, but at this point, we wouldn't even recommend anything or not recommend. We need a deed. And if you have things you wanna see in that, this would be an opportunity, whether you wanna do it tonight or a workshop, tell us what you'd like to see in those besides what has been called out. Um, the things we've looked at is, is that there would be an MOU. Would be worked out with a gear library, um, just in the sense that if a gear library's failed to continue, we don't wanna leave restriction that gets them in, in conflict. Um, there was great support of the Boy Scouts, probably worked with um, residents on a gear library to make it one of their projects, kinda fits their mission, was way it was shared in the conversation. But I think an MOU would be important. And then the other one was is that, uh, we would wanna make sure, again, they got the legal opinion there from the attorney, that it would stay as historically maintained in good maintenance and they can't transfer it out from us without our permission. To become town property again before it would be sold or gifted to another organization.
Okay.
So that's, we got outlined it, yeah.
That's, that's where we're at. So Clint, thank you for that. Um, I'll say that in terms of the counselors who attended that discussion, it was just Sarah and I. So we didn't have a Wildcat Council meeting, um, an unnoticed council meeting. Um, thank you. Um, so I, we've had the library, the, um, old fire station on, um, North Main Street has, was part of the four, one of the four facilities looked at in the facility report that we see, received last year. I think I forwarded that to all the counselors. Again, it's page fourteen of that report. Um, and we've had, we had a good conversation with the, the folks from the Boy Scouts and, and represented the gear library about using the space. Um, for me, I, I like that this authorizes, there are several steps that we'd have to go through before we finalize anything, including a public hearing that would be noticed and people would have a chance to come participate. I like the idea of authorizing the town manager to move forward. Um, if others feel that it needs to go to committee first and we need to have discussions at that level, that's certainly something we could, we could entertain as well. So right now, we have certainly now's a good time for some questions too, but if, if we need to do a lot of work on this, we gotta refer, we should refer to a committee. If we feel like we're ready to, we're to stage where Clint and his team can move forward and bring us back more for our consideration, then I think we, in my view, we move ahead with the order, so.
Got two.
Yeah, yeah. Now Jacob and Sonia. Jacob's going.
Alright, perfect. Uh, so first of all, I, I love this new, uh, model about bringing things, um, it's more efficient. Ironically though, um, while I'm generally in support of this, I, I do think this is one of those items that should be referred to committee. I, I know that, um, I, you know, have some questions about, um, financial capacity. Uh, what exactly that MOU is, is going to contain about, um, maintenance requirements, what happens, you know? If the building were to fall into disrepair, et cetera. So, so while I'm generally in favor of dispose, disposing of this town property to good cause, it's not something I'm prepared to, you know, vote now to, to, to move forward to. You know, vote now to, to, to move forward to, you know, doing your work, um. So, but I, I, you know, generally support this, so thank you.
Yeah.
I would be fine with it going ahead tonight, also fine to refer to committee, my one additional thought that I had, I like the existing. MOU idea, and I was curious if there is possibility appetite, if this matters, that there be an additional MOU that allows. For like town use of the space if the historical society wanted to do something, given the historical nature of the building, for example, and that's. Uh, that's a question that I'm not on the historical society, don't have the answer to if that's. Desired, but maybe is another point in favor of moving it to committee for just a little more discussion, but. Um, this, this sort of lame duck councillor at least thinks that this is a great. Uh, great thing to transfer ownership of this building, and my hope is that. Like, sometimes with ownership comes a real sense of ownership in maintaining the place, and that that could be really motivating for the Boy Scouts to like have that as. A resource, so.
Uh, um, I wanted to say, Dan, can I go?
Yeah. Yep.
Um, I wanted to say that I really appreciate that thought about the historical society, I am the current rep, and I'm not sure if it's been asked, but I know they've talked about that building in meetings, so I think. Talking about whether there's a potential second MOU, there's a great idea. Um, I really appreciated Clint's introduction to this item. And that this is this new structure where the order is only there so that if we were ready to vote, we can, not because we need to vote. It is perfectly appropriate to send it to committee, to table it to the next council meeting, if we need further council discussion, and I just want to make that clear for the public, that when things show up. It doesn't mean we're intending to vote on them tonight. Um, and in this case, it does sound to me like with the MOU additional issue, and I'm especially. Interested in how the language gets worded around maintenance, how that goes in the sale, like, how is good maintenance defined, and you know, how does that work, how does that, does it. Revert back to the town, the ownership, if they're not maintaining it, or what does that look like, so I do like the idea of a committee, and my only suggest, my only question is, which committee? Are we talking finance and operations, since it's an operational matter to sell land, or are we talking community development, because. This has been something the community's been talking about a long time, for community uses, what committee is my question?
I was thinking community development, because it is more of a community space in my mind.
I think, I think Matt.
Finance.
I think, I think Matt, um, the gear lib, Matt has a connection to the gear library that I think. Uh. Doesn't complicate things, but I think it. I think we should put it in finance, Jacob, just because of Matt, uh, Matt was. Matt's, I don't want to speak for you, Matt, I guess I am speaking for you, but.
Okay. Put it. Yeah, we should not put it in finance.
So, so I have, I have a conflict of interest here, my wife is the one who has been pushing and trying to um. Get a gear library either in Old Town or here in Orno, um, and um. One of the locations could be at the um, at. The old firehouse station, especially this MOU, I was not involved in the discussion at all, I wasn't there, I specifically did not go there. Uh, because I didn't want to have a conflict of interest here, and so I think this one might be good to go to a different committee. Um, I'm for it, but I'm also for it with the caveat that like I have. Uh, an emotional stake, because I also would like to see the gear library. Up running and here in Orno, so.
So Dan, would it be appropriate to make a motion to send this to the Finance and Operations Committee?
I think that'd be fabulous, yeah, is that a motion from Council Marks? And a second is Council Bertholm, and I think it would be in keeping with Leo's interest to talk about this some more, and I, I like the idea of. Counselors being able to participate um in discussions, even if they're, they have a conflict of scheduling. Alright, so uh can we get a vote on the motion to refer this to the committee?
Dan, Clint has a point of order.
Sure Clint.
You going to the committee, committee, or the committee of the council?
The committee, the Finance and Operations Committee. That Leo, that Jacob chairs, right?
Well, the problem is, I don't know that that committee exists right now, until the kneecap recommendations are approved, as anything other than the full council, I don't know, I mean.
We're gonna figure so. Technically still have a.
Yeah, you have.
Technically, we're all still on it. That's what I'm saying, until the kneecap recommendations are approved, we are technically all councillors still on that base.
I mean, I think that's fine.
If it ends up being all of us, that's fine, we'll see what happens with the kneecap discussion, I would say if the kneecap discussion approves a new model, then perhaps it can go to the smaller version of the committee. Does that sound okay, Clint?
Yep, then that's what I needed to know, so that's where we're gonna end up with it, okay?
Okay. So to the smaller, so. So this is a roll call vote to refer this to the smaller committee that Jacob. Uh, chairs. Uh, with all of us or all by himself, depending on whether you're a glass full, half full, or half empty type person. Um. Yeah, okay, Council Baker?
In, in favor.
Thank you. Council Arway?
Favor.
Council Bertholm?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Okay, and I'm in favor of that too. So, that's, that is six to zero in favor to refer to the Finance and Operations Committee. So this will, Clint, this will show up on our agenda, at the top of our agenda from now on, right, as a referred item?
Yep.
Yep.
Daniel, let's, we have talked about making a date when things are referred to committee, by which we want some kind of report back, but in this case, I don't think there's any date, it's just tabled without a date, well. Right, we don't know, because the committee doesn't have a schedule yet, so just heads up, hopefully that'll get here in the future. Thanks.
Okay, yeah. We can pull it off the table anytime we need to, to refer it, you know, provide a date. Uh, you know, a different charge or something like that, so. But, okay. Uh, that closes, um. Order twenty-four-two-one-five, next we have up order twenty-four-two-one-six, an order approving. The town manager's nomination of Bell Ryder to the MRC Board of Directors, do we have a motion?
A move?
Second.
Moved and second, any discussion?
Uh, real quick, Leo asked me to. Yes, asked me to ask this as he was leaving, um. Is there any concern that uh all the other members are uh actual employees of the town, whereas Bell is not anymore? Um, and she would be speaking for the town?
So, long story short, MRC has three categories of members. At large, um, from your town. At large is a staff member of the town. Or non-at-large staff member of the town, and then an elected official of the town, which is all three, she falls in the first of the three because she's a resident. Um, had some conversation, we, uh, Bell and I had a great conversation, um, we're gonna utilize on staff some. Resources that she works, has worked with, and that we want to get some more background, and this is the. I'm gonna get it wrong, Municipal Recovery Corporation, so they work with trash.
Yeah.
And that's what's in your packet for people at home, these are the ones that help try to reduce your cost for your waste stream of trash, so. Uh, as our representative, she has served on it for a little while, there is a lot of staff transition going on, and it just seems like to be a good fit. For her to work with some of the staff members she has in the past, to kind of get them more up to speed, and. We've got a great process in place for her to keep me up to speed as well, if there's items that need to come to the council for action.
Just for the sake of the recording, I believe it's Municipal Review Committee?
Is it review? Yeah, I said recovery, I think they used to always call it recovery, review committee, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a, a great explanation, Clint, thank you, I certainly appreciate Bell's uh willingness to. Um, serve the community in this way, and um. I'm happy to support this, uh, your recommendation of this nomination, so, any other discussion on this one?
Uh, to be clear, per um. Jacob's, or Leo's question that was brought up by Jacob, uh, Bell is not at, in fact, given what you just said, the only. Uh, person who would be serving who's not on that group.
Correct, we have some elected officials and some other, just residents of other communities, and there's a lot of members.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, it feels like we're ready to vote, so. Stop me now, otherwise, we're gonna go, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
And Council Demerits in favor, so that's six to zero uh approval, thank you Bell for uh serving this capacity. Next, we're gonna go back up to, and again, I'm. Amanda, I'm watching you just. We're gonna go back up to order twenty-four-two-hundred, that's the order approving a victor's license for Harvest Moon LLC eighteen Mill Street. Think we need a motion to bring it to the table, and then we're gonna need a motion to amend it, so it's um conditional. It's conditioned, yep, so moved, is there a second?
Second. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, can I get a, Clint, where do you want the, what you want? You want to call it order conditionally approving?
Uh, order approving a conditional victor's license for Harvest Moon.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Victualers.
Victualers license, is there a second?
Yep, Jacob seconded.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of, is there any discussion, sorry? Okay, all in favor of, um. Not all in favor, we'll take a roll call on the amended amendment. Um, Council Baker?
Favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
Okay.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, that passes, the amendment passes six to zero, now we're gonna vote for approval. Um, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Demerits in favor, order twenty-four-two-hundred as amended passes unanimously six to zero. Could I have a motion to bring order twenty-four-two-zero-one onto the table?
Hey, just for anybody that wants to know if there's any questions, conditional means because of that last inspection. On site for all three of these, that's what the conditional is referencing.
Once the inspection happens.
And they pass, that's approved.
Yep.
All right. Uh, can we have a motion on order twenty-four-two-zero-one?
They moved.
Second.
Okay, um. How about an order, how about a, a motion to amend it to read order approving a conditional victor's license?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
Favor.
Council Bertholm?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, the amendment passes six to zero, now um. For a final approval, Councilor Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Demerit votes in favor, order twenty-four-two-zero-one passes six to zero as amended. Take a motion to bring order twenty-four-two-zero-two to the table.
So move, second.
Okay. Um. Can I get a motion to, to stop me if there's any discussion, yep, so moved by Council Baker to amend order.
Yeah.
Twenty-four-two to make it a conditional. License? And that was seconded by Rob?
It was seconded by uh Council Powers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to order twenty-four-two-zero-two, Council Arway, I mean, sorry, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
Favor.
Council Bertholm?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, the amendment uh is approved six to zero, now final passage, order twenty-four-two-zero-two, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, the uh order twenty-four-two-zero-two passes unanimously six to zero as amended. Now. Amanda, are you keeping up with me right, or I'm keeping up with you, we're gonna now move back to action items, which uh it's gonna be order. Twenty-four-two-one-two, an order authorizing the town manager, expend ten thousand dollars to execute the interpretive science proposal for the boat landing in the basin area as proposed by James Francis. Part of our discussion earlier in the meeting, can I get a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Yep. Good, this is a great example of one that comes forward for a discussion, and I think we can act on it uh right away, so. Without any further discussion, uh, we'll call the roll. Right, Council Baker?
In favor.
Councilor Arway?
Happily in favor.
Happily in favor, Council Bertholm?
In favor.
Council Marks?
Also excitedly in favor.
Start adding verbs all over the place.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Okay, Council Demerit is lovingly in favor, and appreciative Clint of your work to bring this forward for us. Um, so that passes six to zero, if you could let, if James is left, if you could let him know, that'd be fantastic. Um. Order twenty-four. Two-one-three, order approving ordinance amendments to the town of Orno, Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-eight, Personnel, Article five, Benefits, Section twenty-eight dash eighty-two, Holidays, Topic Adding Juneteenth. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Good, uh, good work by us, uh, thank you to the staff for bringing this forward as uh, in catching us and reminding us that we had this opportunity. Uh, with that, we'll do a roll call, Council Baker?
Favor.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Bertholm?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Demerit votes in favor, order twenty-four-two-one-three passes, and Juneteenth is now a town of Orno holiday forever, well. Well, it is, by law. Forever is something that I guess like you don't get to decide, but it's. Um. All right, order twenty-four-two-one-four, order accepting a bid received from Used Brothers Incorporated Hand in May. For three hundred and eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the Coburn Drive sidewalk lighting project, can I get a motion to bring this before us?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, then discussion, Clint, do you want to take this, do you have? Anybody else there?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh. Bill, yeah, one up. Uh, we, we did do some, we're both new. Um, so this project does go back, there's quite a bit of history to where this came up. Um, some councillors did ask that, so I wanted to make sure that this is there, this is shared, um. There's money in there for paving in this year's budget that's carrying forward, you voted on previously, that will be done after. This project would be completed, the timeline, that's more your world, but it looks like we're looking later, right?
Yeah, we're looking uh next year, but hopefully within this budget year. Yeah, for June.
Yeah, and so with uh, any questions, I mean, it is an area of the town, one of the questions was, is this, has this always been a town street? And believe so, it's always been a town-accepted road, it was never a private way, um, it was never lit. It's now being proposed for lighting, street lighting.
So was, was it always just sort of on a schedule to eventually get lit, or was there some uh set of circumstances?
My understanding is several years ago, they had an issue down the street, and they started talking about safety, walk safety in Orno. And that was one of the areas they brought up, now, one of the issues running in there is. They didn't put poles up, they ran everything underground, that's why we have to go this direction. Otherwise, we could just stick something on a pole and we'd be good, there's one light down at the very end, there's some question on who owns it. Us, whoever, nobody seems to know that. So that's one of the reasons this came up, and like I said, this was handed to Clint and I. We've had to do some background checking, and that's all we know about it at this point.
Yep.
It did come in a little bit under budget, what they initially told us would cost us. Uh, my crew will actually do re-side the sidewalks. Uh, and raise all the manholes and everything, get ready to do the paving. So we'll handle a lot, we'll, we'll still handle a lot of the uh, uh, other stuff on that project.
Thank you.
Can I ask a good question? Just about, I'm just curious about this in general, every time we add lighting to the town, are we being aware of the dark sky initiatives around us, and the lighting, you know, all pointing down, and the kind of lights that keeps our dark sky rating, I'm aware we have one of the. Better areas in which to view stars, you know, because of that, so can you speak to that at all?
From my understanding, that's what has developed, that's why we actually went out to an engineering firm to have it engine, fully engineered. Absolutely, yeah, trust me, we get hit up that quite a bit.
I'm curious about that myself, I actually am an amateur astronomer, and I've been curious about sort of. What thought has gone into, and this is maybe a different discussion at some point, but I'd love to learn more about. Uh, the. Sort of the ways that we approach lighting in town with that in mind, as sort of a shared heritage, not just for people who. Do astronomy, but just as, you know, human beings who have always been able to see the stars.
It's, it's uh, it's something we, I run up against as I've been here a lot, but we've talked to a lot of people, so we do try to keep it down as much as possible, I'll give an example. Uh, the high school, a gentleman called me, we had, it was very dark there, uh, we put up one light and fixed two others, and he had an issue with one we were gonna put in. So I told him, we'll back off, leave that alone, see how it turns out, and it seems like it turned out pretty well, so we kind of take that, I, I take that approach. Try to help people that way, yeah. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, good work, let's move on this one then, um. Order, we're, a roll call on. Sort of order twenty-four-two-one-four, Council Baker?
In favor.
Council Arway?
Favor.
Councilor, uh, Bertholm?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, so thank you very much, that passes unanimously six to zero. Um. Now we're on, is that, that does it, right, Amanda, for action items, do we have anything else? Yep, thank you, now we do uh, committee reports, uh, committee ten A, Finance and Operations Committee. Uh, ARPA funds discussion. Jacob or Clint, do you wanna, how do you wanna handle this one?
Yeah, just. Pass that around, I did have one question, there was a couple attachments, um, shared, the easiest way to answer it was to take the two attachments and turn it into one. So, just an update of your Webster side project, there's more. ARPA funds left over due to unassigned projects from prior years, or kind of completely unassigned at all, saving just in case there was higher needs. Um, this is the, we're on the deadline in November, um, the handout will be made available online after this meeting. Um, and is available, I think, Pete, you can pull it up for some people that are watching to see.
And you have it in an email, correct?
Yeah, you have, it was emailed out, and then he's gonna pull up, this is just the new summary, everything in bold is what was done new. But what we did is, is that we just reduced the uh, amount of capital infrastructure reserve, uh, because we're using two hundred and seventy thousand. Six hundred and eight dollars of remaining ARPA, now these, again, read the bottom, these are all estimates. Projects have to close out, we gotta be done, but Webster's your catch-all. We had a conversation at the last council meeting about options, what to do with it and where it could go, nothing, you know, you made your decisions there. This is the net result, um, we would have two meetings to allocate, contract and do. Or having written contract for that two hundred and seventy thousand, it's not gonna happen, and this frees up capital infrastructure reserve. So, any capital infrastructure reserve project in the future you would do, you now have that money, it's kind of the same net effect, rather than designating it. You're leaving yourself with the flexibility to designate to a future, by reducing what you're spending on this one. Um, if anyone asks questions, we did not do the percent share of wastewater to capital infrastructure. Um, just because the town's capital infrastructure needs is lower, and there wasn't money in their budgets, and it was just felt that that was. Intended for the base of the initial commitment was the two fifty, and this is a chance to recover the capital infrastructure we're observing for the town. So that's why we wrote it that way. You don't need to take action, it's more of an update for discussion, and if you didn't want it here, I'd say this is where you could pull it. Move it, ask for future meetings, but this is where you're at a committee, this would not come back to the council for a vote. Um, you've already approved the Webster project, and had this language from the beginning, this is just an update.
Clint, can I just clarify one comment you made, so, when you were speaking about the wastewater reserve at the end there. I believe I maybe understood that what you're saying is that. That the, that percentage of the project funding, which was originally to come from wastewater reserve versus the capital infrastructure reserve was. Basically forty percent versus sixty percent on the chart, and you're saying that we took the whole two seventy. Um, to the capital infrastructure reserve, not the wastewater, correct?
Forty point two to fifty-nine.
I understand, it wasn't divided, so for folks who've been tracking and concerned about the capital infrastructure reserve getting spent down, Leo, I know who's not here, who's been tracking that carefully. If currently, it's looking like only amounts coming from the capital infrastructure reserve on this project at this point is approximately a hundred and seven nine sixty-one. Am I correct?
And the good news, no other better place to share it than here, contract price is actually lower. They, they did have a savings for us before we signed, about fifty thousand less, so there's even more savings beyond that, but again. We wanted to stick to the intent of the original resolves, we'll get that when the project wraps up.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, anything else in this discussion? Okay, we'll close the Finance and Operations Committee, um. Discussion report and move to the Community Development Committee, Councilor Powers, you wanna walk us through the mini grant items, Matt?
Sure. Yeah, so um, I wanted to give an update on some of the last year's mini grant proposals, specifically on what um. What wasn't funded, or what was funded and um, didn't happen, so the big one we have is the Launchpad, which was the wheat. It was um, a project to bring um, wheat paste art installations um, into downtown Orno. Um, the organization was planning to work with Orno businesses, and also make install wheat paste murals on the exterior walls. So we funded it at a thousand, I think it was approximately, approximately a thousand dollars. Um, the person who is at Launchpad, who was supposed to actually execute this particular project, left. And um, for, for. Family issues apparently, and um, I've not really been able to get in contact with them since this. I've left some emails, and I've left, um, I've tried to call them, I've left messages on one phone number, and the other phone number is always giving. Um. A um, a busy signal, so my recommendation to the council would be to have Clint, this she. Clint, our town manager, send a letter to them requesting that money, and I have a letter here that I could read real quick, and you guys could.
I don't think we ever paid.
I don't think we paid it.
We never paid them, this is the money, we never sent them the check.
The money, and they never. Oh, they forward, ask for it.
I thought that they got that one.
I'm pretty sure they need receipts, and I don't think.
I know, that way we save an invoice, but I will have to check inside.
Okay, if we didn't pay it, we'll send a letter to ask it back.
Yes, if we pay it, we just um, send a letter to them requesting it back, so I have language there, um, and if you guys want that. Um, there were uh, a number of other, um. Um. Yeah, there was a um, a re, a request by Jeff Owen for a multi-sport event to be held. Um, he never um, requested money, and he never held the event, and so my recommendation is we um. We suspend that money and either roll it forward or put it to better use. Um, and further, one last, um, there was two hundred and fifty dollars that was not spent, that was allocated. For um, a public art, um. Installation, or not installation of public, just an art event by Megan Schneider. And so we, we approved for two hundred and fifty dollars, only three of those were done, and only three, um. Three, two hundred and fifty dollars were funded, so there's two hundred and fifty left over from that. And then, we also funded the geezers and sneakers, an extra two hundred and fifty dollars for t-shirts, which were never asked for, that funds were never asked for. So we have a, a total of one thousand five hundred dollars approximately that we allocated. But were never asked for, and we never um, sent out, and my recommendation is that we, um, we. Time those out, and move that money either into uh, more mini grants, or to some other, um, useful town. Town function, so that's my um, recommendations there, um, we have a new.
Jacob had a question.
Yes.
I have no question, but um, I think. Uh, we should put, my recommendation is to put in the guidelines, any funds not expended within six months, or. Whatever automatically prefer, that way we don't, that, that, that covers us from.
I, I agree, yeah, I agree.
And revert back to the general fund, or. Or the mini grant fund, what are we talking about?
Makes no difference to me, just.
Probably better those don't carry forward.
Yeah.
Fiscal, fiscal year, would just be hard to track, and it's on by the June thirty. I mean, we'll run with your timing issues when we approve them, but yeah.
Which case, general funds.
Yes, generally back in the general.
Thank you.
Do we need, do we need to have an order on a consent agenda, making that change, since we approved the mini grant, mini grant policy?
Yeah, I, that's what we should do, um.
I mean, I wonder if, I mean, I, I like the six months idea, we might just say, um, eh, eh, con- condition, eh, unless.
Yeah, unless we notify or something.
In, unless there's something within their proposal that it's gonna happen more than six months from when they, I don't know, there just can be some flexibility there. But I'm not worried about it, yep.
Consent agenda, okay with that, you, everyone, kinda, Clint, can you bring that back to us with the consent, if that makes the right way to do it?
Yep.
Thank you.
So. Um, that wraps up number, um, I, item I, now I have item II, and this is Jasmine Broadhead's mini grant request. Who I have uh, spoken to, um, she um, had asked for like a project that was gonna run about five thousand. And I said, you know, we can only grant you seven hundred and fifty, and she said she would scale back accordingly, her project.
She only ever asked us for seven hundred and fifty, it's just that the whole project was five thousand, and. We in our guidelines said something about not funding unless we were a certain percentage of a project, she never asked us for more than seven fifty, so.
Right, I guess, yeah, um. Well, yeah, she didn't, yes.
So she's willing to work.
She's willing to work with what she is given, which would include scaling back probably how many people, um, she's able to bring out of town to do this event. But she's still totally willing to do this event.
It's like a great event.
I think it sounds like a great, good event to me, so.
Yeah, I'm curious, I would wanna look at our guidelines again to figure out. Uh, it's part of the purpose of setting a certain percentage was, making sure that we're having a, an actual noticeable impact on whether or not this.
The question is, do you.
Yeah, so.
This event is.
So this event would happen, she said she would scale back.
If she has.
If she has to, she doesn't get other funding, and that she will make this work with what she gets, including the seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And so Sarah and I have talked, Rob, to your question, we need a slight change in the guidelines, because the wording is actually.
There's a.
Reversed.
Yeah.
From its intent, so it technically says no, less than twenty-five percent, when it meant more than.
It's confusing.
Basically. The intent was, so we don't fund projects that. Likely, you know, will be derived from other resources. Yeah.
So it's possible that the person may have read it and thought they actually had to do the opposite, but what's important is that she's stating for us that she will. Make this project happen.
Yep.
On the ninth, at whatever level can be done, and that was our intent, was to be sure that our money wasn't being put toward a project that wasn't actually going to happen. Am I understanding that all right?
No, that's exactly correct.
Good. I think.
Well, that was also, um, we wanted to make sure to put money toward things that, um.
Wouldn't happen without.
Otherwise wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
Or, or, yeah.
Jacob, can you bring the language change that needs to happen on that?
No, I'm actually just going through the email today, um, so.
But not now, like, is that something you can just work on with staff?
Oh, yeah, that's actually, yes, that's what I was going to do, yep.
Is that okay with you, Clint, like if you.
Why don't we, yeah, cause you already got a consent calendar on the six month.
Yeah, I will uh, send you a new one, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so did we just, uh, we just approved that, uh, this mini grant, is that the, uh? Where we're at?
I don't know.
Feels like we are.
How many thumbs up?
Uh, we do thumbs, right, yep, so, a lot thumbs up, so that's the sense of the councils, go ahead with this one.
Yeah, I will um, email her and call her, make sure she knows, please come back on the consent calendar for the. No.
We don't, we just do it by general consensus, we haven't had a vote on these.
Okay, good, yep. And then finally, the council community potluck update, we have, there is a small core of people who would like to get the potluck. Going in November, we, we didn't get, get enough people for um, October, but um, we'll. We'll try and make that event happen, and um, that small core of people has some ideas of getting interesting groups. So we'll see what comes of that, and um, and hopefully it'll be the, is it the first Sunday?
Typically, didn't have the first Sunday, so whatever the first Sunday of November is on Clint's demo calendar, I believe, that's coming up in the.
Early.
I think it's the third, I think it's the third.
Right before the election, so you can encourage everyone to vote at the potluck.
Seven really beautiful events. Um, we'll keep you, I'll try and keep you just like verbally up to date, how that's going, whether we have pitfalls or not, but um, I. That's where we're at.
And Matt, also, just for anyone listening in, like, if people want to help make those potlucks continue, what you're putting together is like a steering group with subdivisions. That keeps it going, and then other people that just volunteer one time, so for anyone who's interested in keeping it going, reach out to Councilor Powers.
Please, cause that's where we're, we have the least amount of.
We made it.
Volunteers.
We made it clear last year that council itself can't continue to run them on our own, and the community members said they wanted to step up and keep them going. So if you're one of those community members, step up and reach out to Matt.
Yeah, please. We use the help, alright.
Alright, great, so that ends the, thank you, Matt, that ends the um, Community Development Committee up, uh, report. And now we're on to the nominations, evaluations, and council policies committee report, Council Marks.
Thank you, um, as folks know on council, and anyone in the public who saw the report, it's a very lengthy report. Um, we worked really hard on the nominations, valuations, council policy committee, which we sort of have been shortening to some version of kneecap or kneecap. Or something, um, and I wanna thank our staff members, who were Shelley, Crosby, and Mitch Stone, and Clint Deschand. And our counselors, who were Jacob and Matt, we met eight times for an hour each time, sorry, Rob. Rob, not Jacob, I'm just looking at Jacob, Rob Laraway, there you go, um, we met eight times, it was a lot of work. Um, really an impressive effort by everybody, and we're mostly here to answer your all questions, so I'm gonna let Clint say a few words, and then maybe I'll say something about the opening page. And just open it to council and the public for questions.
Yeah, two things, just wanted to thank everybody involved, this is a huge project, I mean, this is something that is, you know, in the order of months. Is typical, this is a, you know, our year-long first process to bring back with a, a, an official report. Sarah did tons of great work coordinating the cross-references that are all over our ordinances and our charter. And, and uh, so forth, with the help of Shelley, Amanda kicked in here and there as well, I know, cause we kept looping her in on helping on this project. We needed more information, so it was a great team effort, um, I think community should be commended, and I mean, I think this is just your next step forward on. How you conduct business, this is something that will not be set in stone, this will be something that will be set as the way to move forward, and we'll continue to adapt as we need. And change more, um, I think the implementation. Um, is something that will take a lot of time as well, I think one other thing the councils, you go through this is, besides the questions about what's in it, but. How do you wanna see this brought forward, is this something that, with the actionable steps that are in it, I think some of it should be just kinda left as maybe a work plan related item. That the manager and staff can work on, obviously ordinance changes and those things, staff would work on, but those can be brought forward fairly soon. Um, and we probably wanna time them in, in, in groups. Um, whether it's one, or two, or three groups of those to come forward, and to get them in and approved, but on that, I'm quite impressed. Without Sarah's help, it would have been impossible, and the rest of the committee members, but this committee really did do a lot.
Please, thank you so much to you, to Shelley, to Mitch, uh, for your valuable expertise, Sarah did a monster amount of work on this. I mean, it's really incredible how much organization went into this from Sarah's part, I, I mean, I, I, I was there, and I, I contributed. Uh. Thoughts and feedback, and did a, a little bit of work, but really, I mean, it's almost like. I'll, I'll stop there, but it's really incredible work, Sarah.
Um, so, for the rest of council, who's not Jacob and Rob, who've been there for these discussions, especially, yes, Jacob, go.
I just wanna say one quick thing, I know that Leo had some concerns about, or questions about transparency, and how this would impact transparency. And he's not here tonight, but my response to him would, would be that, um, I think. This makes councils business more transparent, because we have scheduled meetings, we have scheduled structure. So that uh, the public knows when we're going to discuss things, and how we're going to discuss things, and when we're gonna vote on things, and when we're not gonna vote on things. So i- in my mind, adding this structure, adding these procedures, actually improve our transparency and ease of following. The work that is done.
Thanks, sir.
To that end, um, so, is there a, uh. Place. Wh- where the public might see the recommendations that we've given, I forget whether they're public, you know, I, I have access to them.
Share.
Full reports.
Report is shared.
It's already been shared.
Linked to the agenda.
Oh, it's, I did see it in the agenda that I had.
Added, it wasn't linked by mistake, and then is it not opening?
No, but so the, what I have linked in the agenda is an Excel file that opens and says that it's. Yeah.
Try again, because it was like that earlier today, and I just refreshed, and they're both there.
Okay.
And members of the public speak, have you been able to see it?
If you go to the website, and you go to Agenda Center, you can get it from there.
Oh, the one on the website was the one in the email as well.
Yes.
Got it.
That's where we.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Thank you, Amanda.
Just wanna make sure people could see that.
Thank you, Jacob, I wanna say, thanks especially for the comments on accessibility and ease of information, that was the second goal council had set for us as a group. And I feel like we worked very hard to try to build a structure that would be clear and comprehensible. Where people would be able to follow issues as they moved along, and know where they'd been referred, and when they were coming back to council, um, so I think it's a really important question. On the front page, there's a bit of an infographic that I just wanna call people's attention to, that sort of outlines some of the basics. That, you know, the public is always the center of everything that happens in town, and their choices are to speak to their town counselors, or their town managers. Or come directly to a council meeting to get things, um, talked about at a council level. Um. The infographic shows you council meetings, although it says second and fourth, there is an asterisk, which is very important. We tried very hard to be sure we were avoiding all important holidays on our town holiday calendar, and that means it is not always the second and fourth. We would adopt a schedule, a year-long schedule in November each year for our council meetings. And staff has put together a sample one in the proposal for the coming year, but I think that's really important, that that information is public facing for a year at a time. As opposed to just three-month chunks, um. That, you'll see then on council workshops, they maintain their current role, um, and we would try to keep them on the same nights. As regular council meetings, so as not to add more nights of meetings, since one of the goal was two nights of council, if we could accomplish it. Um, the biggest change is probably with committees, and this would really. These recommendations would really make committees a place where council refers tasks to, and then gets reports back. And not our old model, where every counselor was on every committee, and committees weren't really committees, they were just the whole council meeting to talk about something. It was a very different model, um, committees are best at certain tasks, really detail-oriented work is what they're best. It was a very different model. Um, committees are best at certain tasks, really detail-oriented work is what they're best at. So our recommendation is to have three counselors per committee, um, to have clear task for each committee. And that the committees make recommendations back to council. Only council has the ability to make decisions and act as now. Um, so I'm not going to go in further because this is, we have a long meeting already. There were top eight recommendations, which were really the ones we felt like without doing these, those, um, goals, those five goals can't really be met. And all the other sixty are details of how to make these top eight function. Um, that's what I have to say. Questions from other counselors or the public?
I have, um, I, I want to add, can I, now a good time, I want to add my just appreciation for all the work that went into this. I think you really capture what we wanted to achieve in terms of, you know, bringing more transparency and orderly work to our work. I think we lived it tonight with the discussion about the, the fire sta- the, you know, the old fire station. Um, where we just can't be afraid to bring something forward, have a conversation about it, decide, um, decide if we need more information or not, uh, before we act on it. Um, so I really appreciate that. And well, and the sa- same thing with the boat launch piece that we acted on tonight. We heard what we needed to hear. We have to move on it. Now Clint's got his marching orders to work with, um, James Francis. So I, I just, we're modeling that already. And I like that. I think we're going to be a lot more efficient and more transparent with our work. And I like that for those who have questions about the work this committee did. All the meetings were noticed, all the meetings were public, the recordings were online. There is, people can go back and look at it. Um, this was something that was done, you know, in keeping with our public meeting responsibilities. So I, I like that. And now it's up to us as a council to take this in and act on the recommendations. Sarah, I'd like to suggest that we bring this forward in our October seventh meeting with an order for the council to, um, accept the recom- you know, accept the report and charge the, the town manager and the chair of the council with implementation. I don't know if people think we need something more than that with an order, but I, I feel like this is a, a blueprint that becomes part of Clint's work plan in the upcoming year and, uh, part of what we do in terms of managing council operations. Any concerns with that approach?
My only question, and, um, I've lived this, so I want to be cognizant of that, um, that I'm very familiar with everything that we're recommending and the whys. Do we need to have any sort of, I mean, I guess changing ordinance will require a public hearing. So that's where we'll get additional chances then. Yep. Okay. So I answered my own question about making sure that we're not rushing this.
Every ordinance change would definitely require the full public hearing process. Um, there are a list and the early pages of the ordinance changes suggested, and then an amendment that gives you all the detailed language. On those, you're right, that's really important.
And some of the finer items might just end up in your council procedures menu.
I think a lot of it will be in incorporated into the policy and procedures manual. But for sure, if council feels like they're not ready on October seventh and have more questions and want to further workshop on the recommendations, we're willing to show up and talk about every detail. Rob and Jacob and
I, I don't know. I'm really
We'll make that workshop optional. You know, we'll post it as an absolutely a public meeting and during the day, so we don't take any more staff time up. Make it optional. And if you feel like you need more time with this in a workshop setting, I'm, I'm kidding. I, I don't think we need it. If someone wants to ask for it, we could certainly consider accommodating that. But if, um, if there's support for moving forward with this, um, this is what, this is what work group or committees are supposed to do. You know, go out, do the work, clearly did it, brought us back some recommendations. And now it's up to a majority of the council to decide whether we're going to, you know, accept these.
Do matter, Sonya, have any questions? Who, I just want to be sure they get answered if you do.
I don't. Thank you for asking.
Um, thank you, Dan. I think that's a great, um, I did want to say that I caught two more typos tonight that are my fault. No one else's. I forgot to delete a wrong page number and I didn't change one letter number. So I'm going to tell staff those and they can fix them if it matters going forward.
I ca- I caught those too, Sarah, but I didn't want to call you out in public like this. So I, but
You know, it should have been he, my mistake. And the other thing I did want to say, I did have one question that came to me to ask with some of these, um, forums that are in the attachments suggesting, for example, a form that's come out referred every time a committee, an issue is referred to committee by council, there's a form to be filled out. Likewise, if a new committee were created, there's a form to be filled out. Someone asked me, does staff want those forms or are you making extra work for staff? So I guess I just want to say that the form ideas came from staff. So maybe Clint can speak to that. They came from Clint. So
Yeah, the forms come from us. So we know what you're recording, what you do rather than what you say. It's a lot easier and the work's going to be on your side because you're going to fill it out before you make your vote. And if you don't, we're just going to kick it back and say you failed to fill out your form and you're going to finish it before we're going to carry forward. So it's going to kind of make up council work. But again, it's also one of those ones that if you've done your, this new committee shouldn't come up out of nowhere. So somebody could fill that form well in advance. And it should be just part of the council packet done in advance. But if one were to come up more extemporaneously, just grab a form out of the notebook that the chairperson would have and fill it out.
Thanks. I just wanted to be clear because it was a judgment I got that that was not a council-initiated thing that came at staff's request. So thank you.
Yep, great. All right. So, um, we're going to have, this will, since Stone's objecting, we're going to have this as a, um, we're going to do it as an action item or a consent item. Let's do it as an action item. So we have a chance to have a conversation about it. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Clint. Thank you, everybody, for the hard work. Uh, is that close out the, we, Sarah, do you want to talk about the fall season procedure stuff? We're going to push that. We're not, we don't, we don't want to have, you don't have the expectation this is going to be done by Halloween or anything like that, right? The policies and procedures manual, this will take time. The committees worked very hard. And we're not going to expect them to work quite so hard in the next several weeks. So.
Yeah, I think that's really important that, uh, the group worked eight meetings in two months. So I think we need a little bit of slowing down for this committee. That's not normal, as Clint said. No one should expect if you run for council that that's normal. It's very unusual, but we really put in a strong push to get this done. And Dan, the other thing I guess I want to say is when we take that vote, I think one very important thing on October fourth is the charges for the four committees. And the suggestion to have four standing committees of council is something I would want to really highlight to councilor's attention in that vote. Because taking that vote is very important for us to have a committee's structure. We also, Dan, would need to, um, you need to have people, oh, like, I mean, appointed to those committees. So you might need to send a poll out to counselors, asking them to rate, as is suggested here, what order they would prefer to serve on those committees so that perhaps a slate could come forward of who might be on each of those four committees, so that these four committees can get up and functioning as soon as possible. As we saw earlier in the meeting, until they're up and functioning, it, it's problematic. There's work that is hard to figure out how to get done. So I just want to add, could we be sure on the seventh that we are aware of those committee charges? And perhaps could you put out a poll asking folks which committees they would most like to serve on and bring us a suggested slate?
I can. Yeah, we'll do that. Clint, we'll do that together. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item up is, um, the town, the council chairs report. Uh, quickly, I just wanted to share the expectation. I want to thank Sarah. Sarah's going to, we, we're a college town, which has, um, and people in our community sometimes travel away from Orno, uh, for, I'm sure longer than they'd like to be away from Orno. And, uh, Sarah's going to be, uh, away from Orno for most of the rest of the fall. And she has, uh, talked with all of us on council, um, see if we had any concerns about her service. We've talked about it with the town manager. She'll be attending remotely, participating remotely, fully participating. Um, but doing it remotely, she's maintaining a residence in Orno. Um, and when asked, no, no one on the council, the town manager was strongly, um, responded that there was no concern, given that the residency was remaining in Orno. Counselors were all asked, nobody had any concerns. So Sarah, I wanted to thank you for your diligence on that. Um, and apologize for the time difference between here and, and, uh, Germany where you're going to be, uh, attending remotely. But, uh, it was the, this council was very comfortable with you continuing to serve in that capacity. Um, you're a real asset to the work that we do and we appreciate your willingness to do it from afar for a little while. Any questions or comments about that? Okay, I did want to add, um, one other piece. We heard, um, a lot of concern out of the Webster neighborhood this weekend about, um, about some late night activities in one of the houses, one of the properties over there. Um, talked with, um, and shared that concern with Clint and the team's aware of it. They're gonna, I'm going to ask Clint to get back to us on October seventh with, uh, the things we can do in the short term. But I also want to have a conversation on October seventh about putting together a group to consider what we do in the longer term to better align kind of the expectations we have for your life in a residential neighborhood in Orno and, you know, the properties that seem to year in and year out um, create challenges in, in those neighborhoods. And it's been something that's been, uh, an issue for a long time. I think it's fair to say that it, it resulted in a meeting that a lot of us have heard about, um, from like three years ago, that never ended up producing anything of, of note, I think. Or at least the satisfaction of, of residents in the, in the Webster neighborhood. So we're gonna, we'd like to have a look at you know, what are the things that we could do from an economic development standpoint, uh, comprehensive planning standpoint, inordinate standpoint to kind of really address long-term, how do we, how do we solve this problem? Um, so I'll bring that back as an item on the October seventh meeting. Happy to discuss it with people between now and then. I don't, I don't know if Clint, if you had anything for it. I know Sarah, you and I talked about it. You're in the neighborhood. Been hearing the concerns that people have had directly for a long time. So it's not just Webster, but
I would just say, and anybody for any issues with related to this, contact the police department. They're a great resource and they can help. They're helping on this and others every day. So that's your first stop. Got an issue in your neighborhood, middle of the night, call the police department.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. And Dan, I think what you said about that isn't, this isn't just a Webster neighborhood issue. It's an issue in other neighborhoods of town particularly too. And occasionally just pops up somewhere where it's not typically an issue. So I hope eventually, even though the conversations may start on Webster side, that they include other parts of town that also have input on how we solve together those issues. So thank you.
Good. All right. Um, thanks for that. And that's all I had on the council chair report, Clint, uh, town manager's report.
Yeah, so there was three there and, uh, just to highlight, um, there's a library, the library is working on their fundraiser. Um, and working with an engineering firm, uh, they are, and, and they want to talk to us as well as some of the firms because we're going to draw the line on when the project transitions. Um, they're going to take us all through design that will be presented as a design that's been cost estimated on budget. At the bid phase forward, it will be a town cost. It's still funded in that partnership agreement that we've been outlining, but we're going to kind of bring this forward with a more formal schedule of what we anticipate and the way it can play out. That's the anticipated date, October twenty-first. I'll keep you posted. I got another meeting this week to kind of see if we're still on that pace or not. Um, so I'll let you know. Uh, just a reminder, week from tonight, we got a workshop with no action at all. Talk about Route Two. You will see a packet probably tomorrow. Um, we've got the questions ninety percent outlined for you. Got some background information that, you know, relates to, that you maybe haven't seen in the past. And then all the other information you received to date will come for that workshop as well. And you can have a meeting on the thirtieth. I'm going to skip that one for the other one. Just an announcement, uh, Route Two is going to have about twenty days of paving on Park Street. And I'm not going to get the address to address because I had, oh, I didn't bring it. Knew I'd forget, so I wrote it down. Uh, Waukesha and Coburn is when they're going to be doing a grind and repaint, about eight tenths of a mile. And like I said, twenty days. So just wanted to share that with you. There's information, brothers, going out. Uh, Shelley did share with me late today, the UTC ballot did get approval for consolidated questions. So we don't have to have it separated. It will be machine counted and be on that ballot. And we didn't lose our place in line. So everything worked out as a win-win-win. Took a lot of work. Still curious, at some point, they're going to notify us on how many of the communities got it on the ballot. I'm kind of curious to make sure that she got it on the mall, um, but we'll see. Or UTC got them on the mall. Shelley doesn't get the ballot questions on in the other communities. She just focuses on Orno. Um, and then last but not least, since we're speaking so much about Shelley, Crosby, she is our Lighthouse Award winner. And I sent out some information to the staff, but this is from the main town city clerks association. Um, I'll say quote, uh, lighthouse clerks are critical for the main town city clerks association organization. And watch out for any rocks or weather which can sink the ship. So I think that hit her very well. And I also found out in going there, um, with her husband with us, is that she was also a few years back the clerk of the year. And that was during COVID. So she was never able to be recognized in the vet. So this was wicked pool on multiple levels. So a lot of fun. Yes.
Thunderous applause. All right. Uh, thank you, Clint. Um, on the, on the Route Two piece, we still, um, love the workshop. And based on how that goes, we're still looking to make decisions on this, um, as a council coming right out of that. So I would anticipate, you know, we'll still discuss it, but I'm still interested in seeing the council, um, take a position, um, in our meeting on October seventh. You know, we'll discuss it coming out of the workshop, see where people are at. But that's kind of what my, my hope is. And, um, if we need more information, we'll take a vote on needing, needing more. If we're, if we're ready to move on and make the commitment around the, around the planning, uh, we'll have that choice as well, if that's the way we want to go. So okay, um, we don't have any public petitions and, and future agenda items, requests for supporting items. Does anybody have any of these? I wanted, go ahead.
I just knew, we just moved, um, to make sure I could, whether you told about the bottles with MJ.
MJ's the next.
About Dan?
That, that's it. I do want to ask, um, Carol, Carolyn Farnsworth came into our eight twenty-six meeting and asked about, um, officers touching base and being downtown and things like that. I don't know if Officer, um, Linsky is part of that and if those, those meetings have happened, but I, I would like to, um, find out how or if we've been able to respond to that. And we don't have to obviously talk about it right now, but I, I would, did want to tag that as something I think it's worthy of a, a follow-up. Um, if there's no other future general items or requests for supporting items, we turn next to public comment. Sarah?
Belinda. Hi, uh, Belinda. Um, I just want to say, so I live at the end of Coburn Drive, right next to that one light. Um, uh, so I'm really looking forward to the lighting projects. I'm so glad this is happening. Um, it really is dark down there and it's really nearly impossible to see people walking, crossing the road. Um, we have a lot of dogs, um, dog walkers and it's impossible to see them as well. So I'm looking forward to, to getting that. And yes, the paving is happening. So, thank you. Thanks, Belinda.
Yep. Anyone online? Okay. Oh, yay, Brian. Yeah, Brian Frederick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm not sure how to turn on my camera, if that's possible. But, uh, I'm sorry, I, I apologize. I think I was in the wrong Zoom meeting at the meeting, the beginning of the meeting. And so I guess the first question, is there anything that, uh, you would like me to speak to in, uh, particular? Sounds like you did discuss that early in the meeting.
Brian, you're with the, you were the Boy Scouts, right? And you were part of the meeting we had with Clint at the, at the old fire station, uh, several weeks ago.
Correct. I am the, uh, committee chair for Troop Four Seventy-Eight as well as for PAC Forty-Seven. And
I don't know if you monitored, we ended up, we tabled, we referred the, um, the item to the, people are supportive. I, I think that's fair to say. But we referred the item to, uh, the finance and operations committee for some additional work. So we're going to schedule that. And what, maybe what we do is make sure that, um, I mean, you're certainly free to provide comment now, but that could be a pretty good venue for you as well when we have that, when we have that committee meeting.
Okay. Um, I guess I saw in the, the letter to you or, or Clint, um, you know, the, we certainly want to keep the firehouse as a, a national historic site. It is a very special place and has a lot of history of the troop. Um, and the, we clearly need to do some major, um, structural renovation work to make it safe to use. Um, but we would like to continue to maintain it. And, um, over the years, we have shared its use with a number of different organizations, the Historical Society, Deer Ghost Search and Rescue and, and so on. And, uh, you know, so we would like to continue to be good stewards of the, uh, building and to be able to continue to use it. And to be able to continue to use it, we'd like to upgrade it so that it actually has heat again and has water, so that we would have bathroom facilities in it. So those are our, our general um thoughts that I, I wanted to share.
Great. All right, well, thank you, Brian. And we will make sure you're invite, you know, you're aware of when we're going to have the committee meeting on it. Um, and give you some notice on that, so you can participate in those discussions directly. So it's not as formal as a, hey, this is your three minutes to talk. We'll, in the committee meeting session, you'll have a chance to engage with you directly on it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Kip, any other public comment? Okay, we will close the public comment and Clint, do we need an executive session?
Do, we got two.
Two.
No action.
No, okay, so there'll be no action coming out of executive session. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion.
Switch, I gotta go to the bathroom.
Yeah, oh, we got a vote to go into executive session first, right?
Got a vote to win.
Okay.
Take a motion to uh move into executive session pursuant to MRS A Section Four O Five Six A, a personnel matter on two items. And they, did I hear a motion?
Jake already motioned and Matt seconded.
Okay, uh, then we do roll call, sorry. Uh, councillor Baker?
Yep.
Councillor Laraway?
In favor.
Councillor Bertholz?
Favor.
Councillor Marks?
In favor.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Demerit is in favor and we will move into executive session in about five minutes.
Perfect.
And we will adjourn from executive session. We're not going to come back into the Zoom.
Okay, Mitch is saying something, though.
You're ending the, you're ending the public meeting Zoom now.
Yeah.
There'll be no action taken and we'll move into your executive session.
Correct.
Yeah.
Moving into executive session. Thank you.
Won't see us again tonight. Thank you.